I'd like to start our June 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay, I wanted to make an announcement that we did have an executive session before our meeting this evening. And before our workshop meeting back on May 20th, where we discussed personnel issues, potential litigation, and potential land acquisition. So we have the overview of the virtual meeting protocols. EJ?
Thank you. This is a, this virtual meeting is a public meeting. It's been duly advertised. It is being recorded. Public comment will be accepted using the question feature on the GoToWebinar platform. All comments on agenda items will be read during the discussion on that agenda item. Any comments on non-agenda items will be read at the end of the meeting during the public comment section. Please be sure to include your name and address in any written questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, EJ. Moving on to the consent agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, May 5th, 2021 Business Meeting, and the May 20th, 2021 Workshop Session. Acceptance of reports, all departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of May 2021. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any comments or questions? I'm going to do a roll call here. Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Tim, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Moving on to our Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bills for the period ending May 31st, 2021. Consideration of Acceptance of the Treasurer's Report and Approval to Pay the Bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And EJ, would you care to comment?
Sure, thank you.
As our treasurer.
Sure. As of May 31st, 2021, the general fund balance was $4,771,155, which was an increase of about $390,000 over the previous month. Through the end of May, we've brought in a little over 63% of our budgeted revenue for the general fund, and we've spent about 32% of our budgeted expenditures for the general fund. In addition to the general fund, all other funds increased for the month of May. Other than that, everything, I mean, all budget line items are in good shape. We're ahead on EIT, on real estate taxes, and on real estate transfer taxes. I reviewed all the bills, and I would recommend their approval as well.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any comments or questions? No? EJ, do we have any public comment or questions?
We do not.
Okay, Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Tim, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. Two-minute reports, Board Liaisons. Bob, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Susan, do you have anything to report?
No, just that the EAC may be scheduling a cleanup on June 12th.
Actually, I did get that.
I don't know if that's been finalized or not.
I, I actually, I did confirm that today, and it will be part of our announcement, so thank you. Do you have anything else?
No, I do not.
Okay, Mark, do you have any?
Yeah, a couple of quick ones. The Clean Energy Transition Team over there, we, we met up for drafting and then sent out an RFP for consultants for the project. Well, let's see, the, they were advertised last week. There's a, the closing date for that is June 23rd, so we'll start moving forward after that. And the expected completion date of the whole project is, is out there is like March 18th next year, so pretty quick turnaround on the, the whole project. Nothing really to report from the, from the Regional Committee.
Okay, all right. And Tim, you are not a liaison to anything at the moment, so I guess you don't have any two-minute reports here for us.
Nothing to report.
I am going to move, and I don't have anything to report either, I'm sorry. And I'm going to move down to EJ.
Just a couple of quick ones. The French Creek Iron Tour, which is a bicycling event that raises money for open space preservation in Chester County, is returning this year after a one-year hiatus due to COVID-19, so that will be Sunday, June 13th. So it's possible you may see some cyclists coming through Schuylkill Township. They have like eight different courses the riders can choose from, ranging from 11 to 100 miles. All routes begin and end at Kimberton Fire Company Fairgrounds. The portion of one of the courses that goes through Schuylkill Township is, we'll come into the township on Buckwalter Road to Creek Road to Valley Park, out to Route 23, and then we'll exit the township, and then we'll make its return through Tridifferent, so that'll be the only portion of Schuylkill Township that we'll see any cyclists. The only other report I have is the, our 2019 Liquid Fuels Audit was completed. They're about, they do those about two years behind, and there were no findings in that audit, so that, that's completed by the State Auditor General's Office, and we got a clean audit for 2019.
Very good, thank you. Madeline, could you scroll down for me, please? Thank you. Board Discussion Items, Old Business Update, the COVID-19 Update and Township Operations Protocols. EJ?
Yeah, I'll just give an update after the workshop meeting we had a couple of weeks ago with some information that the board requested. We were not able to get data boiled down to the municipal level in terms of Schuylkill Township population that has been vaccinated. The, the closest we could get was at the county level. And we're seeing some conflicting data, depending on which source we're looking at. So today's newspaper reported that almost 80% of eligible Chester County residents were either partially or fully vaccinated. The state Health Department's website has Chester County at 76% for partially vaccinated. There's another website that tracks data based on state and CDC, and they had Chester County at 69% of at least one dose with a little over 40% fully vaccinated, although those numbers are based on total population, not eligible population, so roughly, we're, Chester County is close to that 70% mark. It is still the highest in the state based on all of the sources that you look at the data in terms of percentage of vaccinated population statewide. Chester County is still in the lead. So, so the county's doing really well with that. Some other updates since our last meeting, it was just announced that in Pennsylvania, the mask mandate, which is still in place, remember, all other mitigation measures dealing with capacity limitations, gathering limitations, things like that, were all lifted as of Monday of this week. However, the mask mandate was still in place and will be lifted on either June 28th or when 70% of adults are fully vaccinated, whichever occurs first. So it'd be June 28th at the latest and potentially sooner. So that's, that's the statewide mask mandate. Other than that, I have a couple of updates on the American Rescue Plan that we just got today, kind of like a little bit of good news, a little bit of bad news. So the bad news is, we were just informed today, the entire state was just informed today that we would have to apply for the funds to DCD. Even though we're guaranteed the funds, we still have to go through a somewhat rigorous application process, and we were basically notified today and told that we had to submit it in five days. So we'll be working on that over the next few days to submit to DCD. So a little frustrated about that. I, I think we have all the information we need. It's just tedious. The good news is the updated, the allocations have been updated, and, and as of today, the amount of funding that we are due to receive has increased based on the, by about $50,000 compared to the initial notice we were given. So our maximum allocation is now almost $902,000 to be split over the next two years, whereas originally, we were told it would be about $851,000. So, and then the last piece I have on that is we will, probably over the course of the next week, be opening a new bank account into which these funds can be deposited. So I will be notifying the board when more signature cards are available for you to sign.
Yay. Have we received a check yet from this?
No, we won't until we submit this application, but it's, the DCD is intending to direct deposit it, so we need to have the bank account set up so that it can be direct deposited into our account.
We'd expect it sometime this month, right, EJ?
That's correct.
Yeah. And it's half, right? 50%?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, any comment or questions from the board? Now, EJ, do we have any comment or questions from the public?
We do not.
Okay. Moving on, discussion, Paul Lehman Drive, Stormwater Capital Projects Update. EJ, I gotta throw this back to you again.
Yeah. Bob, do you want me to start on this, or do you want to kick this off?
Sure, you go ahead.
Okay, so we had Bob and Tim met, and, and I met with, with Paul and with Russ from, from T&amp;M Associates last week, and we did a little bit of a walkabout up on, on Valley Forge Mountain to look at the area for the proposed scope of work for the Stormwater Project. What we discovered is, I, I guess the, the biggest thing was a couple of trees have fallen into the, the huge gully, the Grand Canyon, somewhat recently, that could potentially create some flooding issues and, and maybe even property damage if, if we get really torrential rain. So they've worsened the, the issue up there because it could potentially dam up the water that flows through that gully if, if we got a, a strong enough rain. So what we kind of looked at when we were walking around up there and started discussing, we kind of revisited the, the topic of potentially phasing this project and trying to deal with the Paul, the, the portion of the project on Paul Lehman Drive from the bottom to the top. And then dealing with the upper part along Forge Mountain Drive as maybe a Phase 2, you know, maybe giving it a, maybe doing Phase 1 in one year, and then waiting a year and seeing how it reacts and how it operates and how it works, and then revisiting the options for Phase 2. So that's kind of where, we wanted to bring that conversation back up. Paul is here. Bob and Tim, you know, I welcome you guys to, to, to chime in with your thoughts since you attended that meeting. But we talked about this about two months ago at a workshop, and at that point, the discussion was looking at the whole project as one, and, and the need to get more grant funding. Where, there's two grant programs that are potentially, that this project would be eligible for if we wanted to get additional funding. They could open in July, but we will not know until then. But it's also possible they may not open this year at all. So we, we can't necessarily wait. You know, we could be waiting over a year, potentially, for, for additional grant funding to be available for this. And I don't think we quite have that much time to just, to just sit around and wait.
EJ, does that grant funding include that one grant that I found?
Yes. Yes, that's one of them. Yep. So the grants are, the one, the grant that we got is a PA Small Water and Sewer, which has, I think, a maximum grant award of $500,000, and that's the one that we got. We got $300,000 for this project, but that was back when the scope was, was smaller. The scope, the total scope of the project was estimated at less than a half a million. The H, the, the H2O grant is very similar in terms of the types of project and the criteria. However, it's a minimum grant award of half a million dollars. So given the expanded scope of work for this project, it would put us into the territory that it, it could be eligible for that program. But again, we don't know when they're going to get funded and reopened. It all depends on the budget, the state budget.
I thought when I saw that, that they were taking applications.
I mean, yeah, I, I think technically we could, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think we could submit an application, but it might, they haven't opened a round of funding yet.
Correct. That's what our grants coordinator went through that as well, EJ, and, and she confirmed as well that nothing is happening until July at the very earliest. I guess we didn't explore whether we could apply with a, a drive fund base, but we, we could explore that if that's what the township would like us to do.
Huh. I know, I'm a bit stumped. And there was no match for the H2O grant, isn't that correct? Or was there a match?
I can tell you in just a second.
I looked at so many of them. I know one of them was like 20%, and then, and there was another one that there was no match.
No, there, that, the H2O has a 50% match.
Oh, it's 50%, okay.
But it, but it can come from other sources.
Other, other, yeah, right.
Yeah.
So we could use the, the, the small water grant as, as the match for that.
Coordinator from the DCD with some of those questions, and he said there's no matching restrictions between those two grant programs. And he said, in fact, we could, if, if the PA Small Water Grant, which is the one that we have, if, if that's reopened, we could apply again. Now, I don't know how good our chances would be, but we could apply again for additional funding in, in the next round, since the scope of work has, has increased for this project. So Bob, Tim, I don't know if you guys want to provide some additional thoughts on this.
So when, when we discussed this two months ago, the discussion kind of went in the root of, we really can't divide this into phases. It kind of all has to be done at once. And now you're saying that it can be divided into phases? Can somebody explain that to me?
Yeah, I, I can certainly go ahead with that, Martha. What was, the concern was that in trying to break it into the two phases, and one was to have the, the public bid for the part that was going to be granted, and potentially the township staff to do the portion on the north side, on North Forge Mountain Road. Based off of the site visit that we, that we conducted last week, there was the concern that we should try to push this along as, as quickly as we could. That being the case, the thought was, at that point, the underground pipe junction that, that turns and causes that, the, the start of the Grand Canyon trench that EJ referenced, we would excavate that and start and redirect the, the, the flow that was coming from North Forge Mountain Road into that system and complete it all the way down. The thought being with that is that if we don't, if we can't do North Forge Mountain Road at this time, whether, you know, material-wise, financially, et cetera, at least we are redirecting the erosive condition that is only worsening. You know, the trees that are, that are falling into the ravine at this point. I'm sorry, go. So, so what we did was, yesterday, EJ had, had mentioned that he, Bob, and Russ had a conversation. And since that time, myself and Chris McClure, another designer at T&amp;M, have been going through the pre-developed drainage areas. In the site meeting, Bob had, had walked me over and had talked about two inlets on Nor, or excuse me, on High Point Drive, which, if, if, if you're looking at the inlets, you really can't figure out where the water goes. Bob and I tried to explore that. We tried to look on the downhill side, past the curb, and there was no sign of it. So similar to what the guts of Paul Lehman, we feel as if there might be some kind of internal underground structure bend, twist, that drags this water all the way over to the inlet on North Forge Mountain Road. Now, as I just discussed, the concern with the phasing was, oh, we'll just try to disconnect at the location where that ravine was starting. Try to, to, to figure out how we drag our design up, tie in to that existing pipe. With going through the drainage areas, the pre, the, the, the existing drainage areas to the, to these inlets, both at High Point, on North Forge Mountain Road, and the other one on North Forge Mountain Road, which is adjacent to a retaining wall. It was again shown as being worked on in the original design scope. We've come to the conclusion that we would recommend that we do not stop at the point we, or we are talking about, but we actually go all the way up and we replace that inlet at the top of North Forge Mountain Road. And the, and the rationale behind that is, number one, EJ had a conversation with Nick today, and Nick was talking about how water can get quickly impounded into that inlet. It's a, it's an older inlet. It's an archaic style of inlet. And that he, when the drainage comes down, it fills up and it pours over. And the pouring over just goes right on to Paul Lehman Drive. What our thought is, is that with all the improvements that we had originally proposed on North Forge Mountain Road, both to the left and to the, to the right, we can, we can put that as an old, as, as a future phase, but we, we think that the 24-inch HDP pipe should be brought all the way up. We suggest putting in a new DH inlet, which is basically an inlet that's twice the size of a normal inlet. We agree with, when we were out there on the site, I don't know if it was Bob or Tim, they liked the idea of the side wheelers to allow additional water to go in. Just, just in the event, we're trying to cause as much surface area that can be captured there. The, the drainage area that's presently getting to that old inlet is, it's over five CFS, cubic feet per second. Typical, typically, when you get to that point, you want to have multiple inlets anyway. Now, this guy's getting already over five CFS, and it's compounded by the fact that it has pipes coming into the side of it. So that little inlet is doing as much as it can, but it's just overtaxed. And that's why we think that if we are going to do this, we would suggest replacing that inlet so that we can make it bigger. We can have it capture more water, hopefully lessen the, you know, the, the maintenance and the clogging that Nick has to deal with on a, on a, on a regular basis. And, and as we would go down, there would be only one other structure on the way that we would suggest to be installed, and it would be that manhole that would, in the event that we do have to move to the Phase 2 portion of the project, this manhole is in line, and we could, we, we would place it, and we would just board up the sides of it so that there would be a easier future extensions or connections to it. I don't have that drawn up yet. Prior to this meeting, I got EJ a narrative and a, or the drainage plans, but it was probably too late for him to, to digest and to, and to disseminate to all of you. So I, I'm trying to verbally explain it to you, and I, and I apologize if it's making your head explode.
No, no, I, I, I've been there. I know exactly what you're talking about. And I kind of have an idea of, of what you're getting at. So I can see why now you wanted to do it in two phases, so that makes sense to me.
But, but, but we can, we can make this into the, into the one phase like we are, are progressing towards. The one, the one thing that we would like to just suggest is that, as opposed to the, the High Point being right where that pipe is that's causing the ravine, I think we should drag it all the way up to that to replace that inlet. I think, I think that inlet is, 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 again, it's doing as best a job as it can. It's just overtaxed, and it, and it, and it needs an upgrade, and it needs to be expanded.
Okay. So the next steps. Let me back up here for a second. The grant that we already have, is that for construction, or is that for engineering, or is it for both?
It's for both, mostly, mostly construction.
So right now, what we need is we need to have this engineered, and then have construction start on it. But can we apply for more grant money after we've started construction? Or is this why you want to phase it so that we can apply for more grant money so that we could say this is Phase 2?
Well, I think the main reason, you know, not to lose sight of why we want to phase it is, is kind of, and, and Bob and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but there, there's a sense of urgency because of the, because of the actual condition, the physical conditions up there and the flooding problem. Regardless of the grant situation, I think the main reason is, is the concern about it worsening and, and potentially, you know, if unaddressed, doing property damage to, to some of the properties up there. So I think that's, that's the main concern. To answer the, the first question, I, and again, I'd have to look into it, but my experience with these grants, especially state grants, is typically, they don't fund anything prior to like the date that the grant agreement is executed. So I don't, the, I don't, again, I, I don't know for sure, but I doubt that we could apply for these grants after the fact.
And we don't have a budget or a sense of cost for the engineering and construction, Paul, that you just described, including that inlet leaving Forge Mountain and High, High Point out of, out of it, meaning that's Phase 2. We don't have those costs yet, right?
We, we have a budget for the engineering.
Yeah.
But not, but I, I'm not sure about the construction yet, Paul.
Yeah, no, I mean, we, we did prepare that one estimate that included all the improvements on North Forge Mountain Road.
Right.
So, so there would be, I believe that was the one that was discussed at the workshop as being like $1.1 million. You know, now there would be less structures, less pipe. There would be no curb install on North Forge Mountain Road. So there would be monies that would be saved with that, and, and, and perhaps that would be something that could be considered on the Phase 2 grant. If we, to apply to say, you know, everything from the, the, the proposed culvert all the way up to North Forge Mountain Road, the new inlet that we're suggesting would be Phase 1, which is a little bit a greater of a length than was on the original grant application. But then if we feel as if we want to go ahead and, and pursue the additional inlets, the additional pipes on North Forge Mountain Road and curb, that could be considered a Phase 2, and we could pursue another grant for that.
I like that approach. Does anyone agree or disagree, or?
Yeah, Martha, the, the, I guess the first thing I noticed when we got up there is, I didn't realize how high that ravine went up. I knew it was a problem down at the bottom. But the two huge trees that have recently fallen in block the ravine at the top. And if the water takes a new course, it could do damage to the houses around it, and that's a, that's where the crisis comes from. So I think that really, you know, it is want to expedite a solution for that without dragging the rest on. And I, I was personally, I guess, concerned that we really needed to do anything with the collection points at the top. So I wanted to just double-check the engineering to see what that, that volume would be, and what it was sized for, what we were actually seeing, and get some feedback from Nick. If, if in that 10-year or, you know, 50-year flood time, if it was not able to keep up, because we didn't see a lot of erosion outside of that trench. There, there's six collection grades total, two on High Point, one at the intersection of Paul Lehman and Forge Mountain, and one west of that going toward the Sun Bowl. And then there's two, I don't know, maybe a tenth of a mile down on Paul Lehman. Maybe not that far, maybe a little less than that, but so there's two different pipes that go into the woods. Four of the drains connect to that upper pipe, which goes into the woods at the top, and that's where the biggest canyon is. And there's two drains connecting to another pipe that also dumps into the woods with a lot of erosion. And that erosion is the, the screaming need that And that erosion is the the screaming need that we had, that we all, I think, agreed need to be addressed right away. So to break it into to a small piece that can be focused on and addressed quickly, I think is where everybody's headed with that. The top part, I I didn't see that as being as much of a critical need based on the erosion, but you know, when I went up there, I went up there this weekend at the heaviest point of the rains that we had. Made a few videos. Now, this was, you know, maybe a scale of two compared to some of the big floods that we get. But I just wanted to look at the sheeting action of the water and how things were pitched and and I get what, you know, Nick's saying is some of the piping, especially coming from the Sun Bowl direction, might be too small to handle the load. That pipe was clogged somewhere inside, and the water was backing up already. But if the engineering that you're coming up with, Paul, states that that great and that the system up there isn't sized for it, then I get it. You know, it's something I think we need to look at as, you know, a project that needs to be addressed, but it's not the crisis that this canyon is for these two canyons, really.
And and I s- I I'm right in line with that, Martha, in terms of the two-phase concept. And that first phase gets us a little closer to the grant money, and then we can all talk and decide about the concept of the, I don't know if the infrastructure, which this would be, falls into the monies coming, but it would be, it would be, I believe, significantly less than the one point one, give or take, was quoted a month ago or so, just the Phase One. And I think it addresses the critical need. It could be a real, real issue for some homeowners if if it backs up. So I'm in favor of that as well, Martha.
Okay.
I think there's, just to address one of the comments you made, Tim, I think there's no question that this project would be an eligible use of the American Rescue Plan funding for the guidance we've been given so far.
At least a topic for all of us to talk about with this project, think about.
And 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 we did go back and we took a look at the rainfall that happened on Saturday when Bob was out there and per the NOAA precipitation, it was between one and a half to two inches of rain that fell in total. So the way that we are designing this is the storm sewer, and we're using the rational method, and what you look for in this is intensity, duration, and frequency. And because when you have, you know, on Saturday was long extended rain. So there was never any that time where the rain's coming down so fast that, you know, the the raindrops are getting hit by, you know, the the bounce back from the pavement or the dirt. And that's where the intensity comes into this. The township's design standards is a twenty-five year storm event, and that's what we would design this system to handle. Of course, there's fifty year storm events, there's hundred year storm events, but the the challenge with that is to 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 capture, convey, all of that, you'd be putting in a Cadillac of a storm sewer system that, you know, potentially might not be used on a regular basis. You know, there's a, when you, a lot of townships don't design to a hundred year storm event because it's just an, it's a, it's a burdensome cost to handle. So we would go with the twenty-five year storm, and and one of the one of the curses of Paul Lehman and one of the blessings of Paul Lehman is the pitch of the road. The steepness of the road means the pipes have to be steeper, which when a a pipe is pitched at a higher slope, it gets a better capacity. So so the problem that we have is all the slope, but in the same breath, that's helping to try to keep the pipe size down as 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 much as possible. So there's a, there's a catch twenty-two positive with the whole situation as well.
Paul, did that storm on Saturday, is that anywhere close to what the twenty-five year storm is?
Hopefully not, hopefully not.
Tiny compared to what you guys would see, but I really just wanted to to see the pitch and get an idea of, you know, what it was doing, but I'm sure when you get a massive flood, it's going to be a lot different up there.
Yeah, i- i- in the in the memo that we prepared that we got to EJ just prior to the meeting, the twenty-five year storm, that the total flow that would be reaching that little inlet would be about eleven point seven three CFS. And like I said, an inlet top is usually only good for five CFS in like optimal conditions. So between the age, the excessive amount of water reaching it, the clogging that's dealing with it, you know, it it's 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 doing the best it can, you know, with all the assistance that Nick gives it. It 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 just, it doesn't have the ability to 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 do what it needs to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
Do, yeah, thank you. Susan, Mark, do you guys have any comments or questions?
No, that makes sense.
Yeah. EJ, do you, um, do you need anything? Paul, I'm sorry, Mark.
I said I'm ready to see us just move forward with it. It seems, uh, seems like a good plan.
I agree with that, too. Is there anything that you need us to do or anything like that, EJ or Paul?
Well, I mean, the the next step would be to to put this, to put this phase out to bid. I mean, I don't think we're quite there yet. Yes, so I I think we could, I mean, the the design for this phase and also cost estimate, I think, I think you would probably want to see that. But as far as timeline goes, you know, if the if if at next month's meeting in July, which I think is July seventh, you know, the board votes to put it out to bid, depending on the timeframe of that, you know, maybe maybe at the meeting in August, we have a bid. You know, we have a bid opening and award the contract. At that point, work's probably not going to, and Paul, please correct me if I'm wrong, because maybe I'm wrong, but we're probably looking at next year for the actual construction of this.
Oh, yeah, I think I think that was the way it was all along.
Yep, Q one.
I think the hope was that maybe we could try to squeeze it by splitting it, we could try to squeeze it in this year, but I just don't, I don't know if that's going to be feasible. And that will give us time to, if these grants open back up, it could potentially give us that opportunity as well.
Agreed. So.
Okay, yeah, I I, you know, I I know that we can use this American Rescue money for this, but I'd really like to try to see if we could find some other money.
Yeah.
I sound greedy, I really do, but I
I agree with you. Get the grant money if it's there to get.
Yeah, and and then try to, you know, spread the love to some other things, so. I, you know, I really don't want to sound greedy, but I guess I am, so. Okay, all right.
I mean, we'll discuss this more offline, but the direction is move forward with the design and cost estimates for this phasing as as you described it.
Absolutely. Okay.
Great job.
Definitely, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sad to hear that, um, the damage is getting worse up there with the trees coming down. I know Mark and I were up there. Gosh, was that two years ago? And it was really bad back then, and now to know that there's more damage is just really sad, and we really do need to get working on this. So this is a good thing. Okay, um, EJ, do we have any public comment on that?
Let me check. One second. Uh, no, we do not.
Okay. So moving on, discussion, the Route twenty-three sidewalk project, EJ.
So where we're at with this project, just a quick re- quick recap, this is, we got a multimodal grant, a multimodal fund grant for one million dollars to construct sidewalks on both sides of Route twenty-three from the intersection of White Horse Road westward to the Borough Line. The first part of, you know, prior to being able to go out to bid for the project, since it's a state road, we need a PENDOT highway occupancy permit. All of the design and technical components that PENDOT is requiring have been satisfied. However, the one outstanding item is that all of the affected property owners along the route of the proposed sidewalk need to be notified and provide consent for the project, and this project kind of took a backseat last year when COVID hit. We didn't really work on it at all last year, but prior to COVID hitting, we were at the point where there were about ten or so remaining properties that we needed consent letters from. Over the last few months, we have resumed our efforts to get those letters. We've gotten about half of them that we need, but there's still about five remaining that we either never got received responses from, or a couple of property owners that are opposed to the project and will need to have further discussions with. So we did reach out to State Rep Melissa Schusterman, who who helped us get the grant. We had a conference call with her yesterday, and her and her chief of staff, and she is more than willing and interested to help us try to get these remaining consent letters that we need. And so the the plan that we discussed yesterday was that we would essentially, we would reach out to these remaining properties and schedule appointments where we would basically go to door to door, myself, Melissa, you know, potentially her chief of staff, the design engineer for this project, which is Gilmore Associates, in case there are any technical questions about the design, and then and and any supervisors who would be interested. So I just, I wanted to update you all that that's the plan. Melissa's about to enter budget season at the in Harrisburg, so we're probably looking at sometime next month or possibly even in August to to coordinate and arrange for these kind of door to door meet and greets to try to discuss the project. So I wanted to provide that update, see if the board had any feedback, and see if one or or two, you know, certainly up to two of yous could participate and attend those efforts if you were interested.
Okay.
That's it. Any thoughts?
I would be willing to go with Melissa and you to a a couple doors, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, well, as I guess, sounds like, sounds like Mark, Martha, and Susan were all interested, so as as it gets closer, we could just
We can fight it out.
And whatever, they're the three, you can fight it out, maybe just based on whatever dates are selected and your availability.
It's the summer, so I'm off school, so it should be good. I should be pretty flexible.
Can I take off the summer? Would that be okay?
Worth a try, EJ.
Yeah.
I think the answer to that is no.
Not the whole summer, at least.
Okay, that's all on that, thank you.
Okay, great. Moving on, new business, consideration of appointment of Ms. Bryn Polina, Township Resident, to the Skookle Township Zoning Hearing Board. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board? EJ, do we have any comments or questions from the public?
We do not.
Okay, Bob, how do you vote? Susan, how do you vote? Mark, how do you vote?
Hi.
Tim, how do you vote?
I.
And I vote I as well. Welcome, Bryn. And, okay, let me see here. Discussion, the Environmental Advisory Council Facebook page. Should we have discussion about this before we make the motion, or do you want me to make the motion and then we can have discussion? In case we want to change, in case we want to change the motion.
Motion typically precedes discussion.
Yeah, I know, but I didn't know if we wanted to possibly maybe change the motion. That's why I was wondering if we wanted to do discussion first.
We can always amend it.
Okay, all right. Consideration of approval to launch an EAC Facebook page consistent with the Skookle Township Facebook management policy and subject to the Township manager oversight. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, um, any board discussion?
Martha, did you want to discuss language?
No.
Oh, okay.
I think I think I think it was fine, but, you know, sometimes we get into these discussions, and sometimes we want to change the word.
Yeah, no, we we hashed that. I I think we hashed out pretty well in the the workshop session, so if he wants to give a quick overview of what we're doing with this, then that would be great, though.
I can just say the EAC wanted to, they've heard that other EACs have Facebook pages where they share information regarding some of their projects. You know, invasive plants, other things they're working on, and they thought this would be a great way for them to also, you know, share information, provide education materials. So we talked about it at our workshop, and we thought it was a good idea as well. So I think we would like to move forward and have them do that.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? EJ, do we have any public comment? Yeah, I think I think it's a good idea. So, okay, Bob, how do you vote?
Hi.
Susan, how do you vote?
I.
Mark, how do you vote?
Hi.
Tim, how do you vote?
I.
And I vote I as well. Okay, consideration of approval of the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Cooperative Memorandum of Agreement for the Route four twenty-two project. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. EJ, would you care to comment on this?
Yeah, sure. So I attended a meeting in February of twenty twenty, probably one of the last meetings I attended before before COVID hit at PENDOT District Six headquarters. A bunch of municipalities along the Route four twenty-two corridor were invited as part of PENDOT's Route four twenty-two corridor traffic, traffic management and and notification system there. They want to install a series of cameras at along Route four twenty-two and along major intersections in the corridor and in the adjacent municipalities. So there's only one intersection in Skookle Township that they want a camera installed at, and that's Route twenty-three and Paulings Road, which they actually installed a Bluetooth reader at the same intersection back in twenty fifteen. So anyways, we had this meeting in February last year, then, you know, COVID hit, and it, you know, fell by the wayside, and and then the the design engineer on behalf of PENDOT reached back out a while back with basically what they're looking at from each municipality is a signed cooperative memorandum of agreement, which is a, is an agreement. I don't, we don't know why PENDOT uses that language, but it's basically an agreement that basically just says we're allowing them to install this camera at that intersection to monitor traffic. And it's going to be all synchronized and incorporated in this major corridor traffic system. It's going to be synchronized with some of their message boards when there's accidents, when there's road closures for any potential detour routes and 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 things like that. So that's what this agreement is. You're basically just approving for them to install that, and you'd be authorizing me to execute it. There's no cost to the township. There's no liability to the township. We we did, after reviewing the agreement a while back, we provided quite a few comments and suggestions for some language that we thought would clean it up a bit, but
All of them were rejected.
All of them were rejected, which Bill predicted would happen. Bill's prediction was that this is basically a PENDOT form agreement that they use for everything, and that was the exact response that we got. But we, we, there's no risk to the township with this.
So if someone hits that telephone pole where it where it is attack, that it's attached to, who's going to come out and replace it and fix it? Is that us?
No, I I that would be PENDOT, and there's a lot of bureaucratic doublespeak in this thing, but I'm pretty sure that we don't have any responsibility or liability. One of our suggestions was a sentence, the township owes nothing and has no liability. They wouldn't, they just wouldn't do that. So I'm, it it's pretty clean, and I do think it's a worthy, I, purpose to try to, you know, help four twenty-two. So I didn't see any real problems with it.
Okay, I I read through it, too, and I happen to agree with that. It's just that, you know, PENDOT puts up a traffic light, and then all of a sudden, the municipality is has the responsibility of maintaining it and all of that kind of good stuff, and I just kind of see that with this camera, but you don't?
I don't think so. I think there, the camera is on them.
I don't think so. I think there, the camera is on them and we're allowing them to do it. And I looked real hard for, you know, sentences that implied liability. And I was, you know, I'm 99% satisfied we'll never have to pay.
Okay.
Hey, EJ or Bill, is there any secondary objective tied to this law enforcement or anything else that could be tied to having a camera there beyond?
I don't think so. I, I, I don't think so. I don't think they're devious enough to be spying on us for other reasons. You never know, they could be working with Google for some nefarious purpose, but.
I'm not a conspiracy theorist.
It did mention that they don't record the video and that at least one police department does ask for recordings of video. Like they, they specifically record the video for that municipality. But other than that, it seems like it's just kind of there to monitor traffic in real time.
Thank you, Mark. All set, Martha.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? EJ, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
No, okay. Bob, how do you vote?
Hi.
Susan, how do you vote?
I.
Mark, how do you vote?
Hi.
Tim, how do you vote?
I.
And I vote I as well. Okay, we have no subdivision in land development. Do we have any additional business?
Resolution ordinances above subdivision, Martha?
Oh goodness, I'm so sorry. I, I skipped right over that one. Consideration of Resolution 2021-10 authorizing the township to participate in the Pennsylvania State Contract Number 4400023757 entitled Asphalt Materials ITQ. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second? Bob, I saw your hand, but I didn't hear you.
Second.
Sorry.
Okay. Um, EJ?
Uh, this is the resolution we adopt every year to participate in the state contract for asphalt. Because it's joint cooperative purchasing gets us a better price. The only thing that's been updated is the contract number from last year.
Cool. Thanks.
Any comments or questions from the board? EJ, any public comment or questions?
No.
Okay, Bob, how do you vote?
Hi.
Susan, how do you vote?
I.
Mark, how do you vote?
Hi.
Tim, how do you vote?
I.
And I vote I as well. And again, I apologize, guys, for skipping over that. So subdivision in land development, we have no agenda items. EJ, do we have anything under additional business?
Uh, no.
Okay, I do have a number of announcements and Madeline, I do appreciate you typing this out. But it's a full page, Madeline, wow. Okay. Announcements for June 2nd, 2021. Even though all state COVID-19 mitigation measures except mask wearing in public were lifted on Monday, May 31st, the Board of Supervisors recommends that residents continue to refer to the CDC guidance and recommendations regarding ongoing COVID-19 safety measures and procedures. Township residents looking for testing and/or vaccine information should visit the Chester County Coronavirus COVID-19 site. At this time, the Schuylkill Township offices remain closed to the public, but all township services continue to function. Building permit applications are being received electronically via the US mail or drop off to the delivery bin at the Township Building. The Township's Historical Commission, Open Space Commission, Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board have openings for members. Township residents interested in serving on any of these boards should send a letter and a resume to the Township Manager at T W P M G R at schuylkilltp.org. June 12th, 2021, the Schuylkill Township Environmental Advisory Council will host a cleanup of our Adopta Highway, which is Valley Park Road. It will take place from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Volunteers should meet at the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company, which is located on Valley Park Road. Bags, cleanup supplies and traffic safety vests will be provided. Traffic control will be provided by the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Police. Please feel free to wear a mask if you are not vaccinated or wish to do so. If you have questions or need further information, please feel free to email earl cram@comcast.net or call him at 610-917-9635. Um, EJ, on that, did Nick give me permission to use the truck?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, June 15th, the Transportation Management Association of Chester County will present an overview of, overview of the Devault Trail Project. The virtual open house will be on Zoom from 7:00 PM to 8:15 PM. Registration is required. More information is available on the township website. On July 10th, 2021, East Pikeville Township and Schuylkill Township will host an e-waste recycling event at the Kimberton Fire Company, open to East Pikeville residents and Schuylkill Township residents only. Additional information will be available closer to the event date. Does anyone have any other announcements? Nope. Okay, EJ, do we have any public comment?
I don't think so. Uh, no, no, we do not.
No, okay. Pending, we have no discussion items. But I was wondering if we had topics for our workshop the end of this month? Later this month, do we have a, a, an agenda for that?
Um, at the last workshop, it was discussed to possibly continue discussing the comprehensive plan. I'm not sure if that's, is that, is that right, Mark?
Yeah, and just a reminder to, I guess, let me know if the commissions are ready for me in July. Because I'll present to them, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll try and, yeah, so that's, that's about it. So if we, if we don't need, if we don't need it for this month for us to discuss it, or we could skip this month.
Yeah, we don't need to have it if there's no topic, those are just kind of put in place if we need it.
I think, I think we covered what we needed to and we could just push me to the commissions and meet, meet about this on our, after we've gone to the commissions with it.
Okay.
So Mark, should we just email our commissions and let them know you're available in July to attend their meetings? And then email you if they would like you to come or?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
That would be great. Thanks.
Okay. So no workshop meeting this month then, right? Because we have no discussion topics? Woo-hoo, okay, all right. Uh, I will make the motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Oh, everybody seconds that, okay.
We're on top of that part.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, everyone, thank you very much and it was a good meeting and we'll see everyone next month.
Very good.
Take care.
All right, thanks.
Bye.